Okay, six, ready? Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. If you'll please join us for the pledges and the prayer.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We have Pastor Sharp with us tonight. Thank you for coming, Mr. Sharp, and he is going to lead us in prayer tonight. If you'll please join us. We all want to hear you.
Would you all please pray with me? Gracious Almighty God, we come to you tonight in a spirit of thanksgiving. We are so grateful for the people you have called to serve this city. We thank you for the mayor. We thank you for the city council. We thank you for the first responders and we thank you for all the staff that that work in this city and do so well. Lord, we ask your blessing tonight on this meeting. Lord, I pray that by the power of your spirit, you would give people ears to hear and eyes to see and a spirit of wisdom and truth. Lord, give them courage to stand for the truth and to act on that truth. To your glory, we pray, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Sharp. No statements, but citizens, okay? We will move on to our first item of business, which is to consider and take necessary action to approve the minutes of January twenty 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 five. Ready?
Yeah, I approve that we approve the minutes from the January twentieth, twenty twenty five meeting.
I said.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor? Any opposed? With that, the motion carries. Next item is to consider and take necessary action on the quarterly financial report in the quarter ending of December thirty first, twenty twenty. We have Ms. Cynthia Sanchez to present that. We all have a paper, few things from her.
Hello, Cynthia. Good evening. Mayor and City Council, before you, is the quarter, first quarterly report for fiscal year twenty twenty five. On this first page is an account for investments as well as cash that's in the bank. At the very bottom in bold tech or bold box, you'll see the overall totals. Before I move on, is there any questions there? No, no changes have been made. A lot, all of the entries made for this quarter were just due to interest. On the second pages, well, the following pages are going to be financial statements as of December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Total revenues for the general fund totaled to three million, three hundred, three hundred and four thousand, four hundred and six dollars, which is roughly thirty-three percent of the projected revenues for fiscal year twenty five. The cemetery fund totals to a hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred, forty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents, which is roughly thirty-four percent of the projected revenues. Enterprise fund totals to one million, eight hundred, forty-five thousand, four hundred, twelve dollars and twelve cents, which is roughly twenty-four percent of the projected revenues. Expenditures are on point right now. We haven't had any major unexpected expenditures, so those are tracking relatively well. Any questions there before we talk about sales tax? Awesome. Okay, sales tax revenue to date is a prop, we have an increase of approximately six point zero seven percent as compared to the same period last year. I've put those totals in the memo for you to review.
Exciting about the sales tax. Very thankful.
Yes, very, very much. Aside from those numbers, just curious, since this is my first official presentation to you guys, is there anything that you guys want to see going forward? Anything specific, anything you want to keep, want me to keep you up to date on?
I love the sales tax. I love seeing that. I try to look at it as often as I remember to log onto the website and look, but I love seeing it the way you presented it.
Okay.
I think you did great for your first one.
I agree.
You, I feel like any questions we would have asked are right here in front of us, so.
I love the way you said where we're tracking, you know, in the, in the percentage for the year, and I love, I would love to hear if there were any major expenses that had come up that we would probably be aware of, but we haven't had any, thank God, but would love to hear about those as well. But it sounds like you're prepared to have those if we add any.
Yes.
Lots to look at, but you have it very well prepared.
It always makes me nervous.
You rocked it.
Awesome. Right, well, if you guys think of anything in the interim, please feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item, it'll be item number three and item four. Oh, we need to approve that. Thank you.
Move to approve the financial report as presented by me.
That's it. We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Both, any opposed? With that motion carried. Thank you, Andrea. Next item is item number three and item number four, the presentation of the Levelland Police Department twenty twenty four racial profile report and the twenty twenty four yearly report. And their handouts.
Yeah, oh, we're gonna get to you.
I know it's with justice, though, so I'm doing something right. Um, getting everyone, we're going to start with the racial profiling port, report for twenty twenty four for the Levelland Police Department. As required by the Texas Commission of Law Enforcement, the report reflects the ongoing commitment for fair, unbiased, and professional policing within our community. The Levelland Police Department has a strict policy prohibiting racial profiling. Our officers are trained to enforce the law with integrity, fairness, and accountability, ensuring that the individual is treated with respect and professionalism. Our policy includes clear definitions of racial profiling, a criminal, a complaint process for citizens, and measures for corrective action if any violation occurs. In twenty twenty four, our officers conducted two thousand and ninety-two traffic stops. The majority of the traffic stops took place on the city streets, um, followed by US highways, county roads, and state highways. Uh, the breakdown, we have Hispanics were one thousand, two hundred and twenty-four, white was seven hundred and fifty, blacks, so a hundred and fourteen. Alaska American Indian were three, and Asian Island Pacificer was one. If you look at our uh, general population, those statistics fall right in line with that. Um, in total, we had ninety-two searches that were conducted. Most, most of those were due to probable cause. Uh, one case we did have where physical force was used, and we had injuries to both the officer and um the person on the traffic stop. Um, there were zero complaints for racial profiling that came in throughout twenty twenty four. Uh, the statistics is demonstrate, demonstrate that our department remains committed to fair and impartial policing with a focus on public safety and community trust. As we, as we move forward into twenty twenty five, the Levelland Police Department will continue to uphold the highest standards of professionalism, ensuring transparency in our enforcement efforts, and work closely with the community to build trust and mutual respect. And that racial profiling report is on y'alls, uh, in your packet, so you have that one there. And the next one is the, or I guess we have any questions on that one? Think I can answer on that.
Did you see anything that we need to be doing different?
Um, no, there's some stuff for housekeeping that'll make that report easier for me next year, uh, but ultimately, everything is, is running fairly smooth.
Great, great to hear. So that is an action item to approve the racial profiling report, unless we have any more questions for Chief O'Brien.
Mayor, I approve to, ah, move to approve the twenty twenty four racial profiling report as presented.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Any opposed? With that, the motion carries, you will move on to item number four. Okay.
Um, this one here is for the twenty twenty four annual report for the Levelland Police Department. The report highlights, again, the efforts, challenges, and achievements over the past year as we come, as we remain committed to serving and protecting our community with integrity, professionalism, and dedication. And twenty twenty four, our department responded to over thirteen thousand calls for service, thirteen thousand, two hundred, to be exact, which is a thirteen point four five percent decrease from the previous year. Uh, while the decline in calls may suggest positive trends, it also reinforces our ongoing, ongoing commitment to proactive policing and community engagement. Traffic stops also saw a twenty-five point two percent decrease while arrests remained steady at about three thou, three hundred and forty, showing a focus on strategic enforcement. However, we did see a slight increase in traffic collisions, eight percent uh, of an increase, which is highlighting the continued need for traffic safety and awareness enforcement initiatives throughout the city. Um, the crime statistics both reflect progress and areas for continued focus. Uh, compared to twenty twenty-three, we had crimes against person increase a one point three eight percent. Crimes against property decreased twenty-five point three six percent, and crimes against society decreased twenty-nine point three six percent. Um, our animal control division, um, we took in eight hundred and sixty-two animals. Um, they worked hard to provide positive outcomes for those. Two hundred and eight found new homes. Two hundred and twelve were rescued by organizations, and sixty-seven of them are reunited with their owners. Um, the numbers, I think, reflect the dedication of the team and the importance of responsible pet ownership within our community. Um, as we move into twenty twenty-five, our focus remains on enhancing community partnerships, strengthening public safety initiatives, and continuing to involve the department as we meet the needs of Levelland. Our success is a direct reflect of the hard work of dedicated officers, civilian staff, and the city leadership and the support from the community. I'd be happy to answer any questions here within the report.
Chief O'Brien, I know, I know you're, you're new to us, not to police work. What do you see? How, how can we be better? Not to say that we're broken or we're messed up, but how can we be better from what you've seen?
Yeah, so coming into this, um, looking back at, at the numbers for twenty twenty-four, um, one thing I did note is the decrease in traffic and the increase in tra, in crashes, and there, as many people say, there's not a correlation or causation there. I would disagree with that, and I think these types of numbers do show that, uh, and so I hope to move forward with some positive, uh, proactive policing on that front. Okay?
Some of those collisions, do you think may have been all of the uh remodeling or the, the construction zones? Because we had a lot of that going on too, so.
Yeah, I couldn't. Yeah, I couldn't speak to that. Um, I also looked at the fact of the number of vacancies we had compared to twenty twenty-three to see if that's, if we really had a decrease or was there, you know, lack, just lack of officer presence because we had less officers out on the streets. Um, so I, I can't answer those question. That's a statistic question that I don't really know the answer to.
Nearly eight hundred less traffic stops. Seems like a lot to me that we're in a new year and we can do all kinds of things.
With me, um.
On doing on the arrests, I was told by a citizen that ICE have been coming in here and risk uh getting people from uh, like immigrants and take them to Level for arrest. Is that true?
That's on the federal level, and that is not something that we are involved in actively with any kind of efforts of that. We have not been contacted either.
They don't, they don't report to you, they don't, they don't tell you what they're doing here in Levelland. I think they say Levelland.
Yeah, no, no, sir. They have not made any contact with us.
Would it be customary for them to contact you if they were going to come in and run?
Not necessarily. No.
What can we do to help your department be better?
I think right now is keeping those officers on the street with the MDT computers, which we have, you know, taken that on. And um, that is something that will help them be able to, because right now, they can't write a report from the iPad that they're doing. They have to go into the, to the department to write that report, and that just takes them off the streets. And so getting them out there to where then, when they're sitting there, writing a report and see someone from that stop sign, they can take that immediate action. You're not going to see somebody running a stop sign when you're sitting in the basement of the police department.
Yes.
And, and nothing wrong with what they're doing. It's just that's the cards they've been dealt.
Absolutely, absolutely, but opportunity to, to be better, and thank you for the initiative to make that change.
Thank you.
And how many positions do we have open at this current time?
Currently, we have three.
Okay, much improvement, right?
Yes.
So much improvement, that's excellent.
We're testing two on uh, Thursday, one certified officer. Actually, I have one starting tomorrow, a certified officer, and then I have um one certified officer that's uh, being interviewed on Thursday, as well as a recruit in the academy who's got some military background that we think we'd really like to uh, hire him and pick him up, hopefully with a conditional offer of completion of the academy. And then I have a couple more resumes that came across my desk, uh, that we're going to do a physical test early next week with them.
And you said resident?
Did you say, Mr. Past, did you say residence or their?
Resident, you had two residents applying.
Resumes.
No, resumes, I'm sorry, resumes. Yes, sir. Um, dispatch, I have a dispatcher starting tomorrow as well. I have got um, three in background, and I'm waiting on two PHSs, which is the personal history statement back from those. Um, it's just, I can't do anything without those. So as soon as I get those uh, personal history statements in, I'm getting them out for backgrounds and hopefully.
We don't want to know about, Ma says we don't want to know.
Too many?
But two would make a dramatic impact.
Yeah, one, yes, anything we um, are able to get and get through training will take. Yeah, so those, the dispatch over there has done phenomenal with the uh, hand that they were dealt, and um, we're working subtly. We've got standing interviews on Wednesdays for dispatchers every Wednesday.
Wow, I, that's amazing.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Mayor, I move the council approve the twenty twenty-four annual police uh, activity report.
Make them.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? With that motion carries. Thank you, Chief O'Brien. And the next item, we interrupt, okay?
All right.
Go.
Um, I just, the chief has been here sixty days, and I just want to thank you publicly for what you've done in that time period. Uh, we are glad you're here. We're glad your family's here, and you are definitely making a positive difference in town already. So thank you for the first sixty, and you just got another six thousand to go.
I second all that.
Yes, great job, her, great job. Yes. Well, well said. Next item is number five, to consider and take necessary action on ordinance number one thousand eighty-eight and ordinance ordering a special election on May third, twenty twenty-five to vote on proposed amendments to the Levelland City Charter on second reading.
So, um, I would just remind, we did a, a very thorough uh, review of each proposition at our last meeting. Um, before that, we had a publicly posted work session uh, for the council that also included the charter committee. Again, we've uh, discussed this in more general terms at multiple meetings here and in three uh, posted and reported and, and placed on the internet charter committee meetings. I'll remind you, y'all are not required to have a charter committee, but y'all did so to increase the transparency and get input from citizens. As I told y'all, before y'all appointed those people, you will be shocked. Uh, they will be shocked at how seriously they take it and how much they enjoy it. Uh, and I think if you follow up with them, uh, most every one of them would tell you that they really enjoyed the experience. I understand we've started um, getting information out on, if not the website, social media, both. Um, I think there's been some media discussion. All of those are exactly what we want. Uh, we want as many people to know about this and understand it, and it's not often I can say this. These twenty-something propositions are all very positive. You know, sometimes I'm just kind of in a mess, and there are things we have to do that don't feel good or feel right. Every single one of these makes your community better. Um, I think they increase the checks and balances. One of the things that we've done is to not redefine, but to make sure that our charter is in accordance with our council manager form of government, so that uh, ultimate power stays here, day-to-day operations, uh, stay with your administration and your city manager, and um, I think that is done very well here. So many of the others are um, getting your elections in line with what is state law now. Just that idea of, I mean, if we're going to be a, a first-rate city like we've become, we want our charter to match state law. It just looks weird. I mean, we'd still follow state law, but it just looks weird and not right when you have your charter saying one thing and state law saying another. I've also seen it, as I've told y'all, cause significant confusion in your citizens when they say, well, I thought the charter was what applied. It doesn't matter that they're wrong or mistaken because you have somebody that's confused, and so this will go a long ways um, towards wrapping, uh, or, or making uh, all of that consistent. Um, I think the one change from the first reading we made was that there seemed to be a consensus on when the uh, proposed budget is due. You remember, and it, it had a number that was way out here, and just in this day and age with what it's taken to get the information that the city needs from the appraisal district, it wasn't feasible, and we looked at cutting that back and then I actually made the determination that state law covers that, and we, we can um, put this in accordance with state law. Um, I think your city manager told you um, with absolute uh, honesty, um, that he never wants to be waiting. No city manager wants to be waiting. They want that thing done and taken care of, and everybody on the same page quickly. So I don't think it's going to be a practical change, but we do have to account for um, the changing world that we live in. But uh, having been through it, you know, item by item on multiple occasions, uh, I think this is ready, if it pleases the council, to go ahead and make the motion to approve the second reading, and your city secretary is already working on publications. We're working on translations. You can imagine, it's a lot of pages to translate, but we've got somebody working on that right now. But I think it's um, in shape and prepared for y'all to move forward, unless y'all have any questions.
I believe that we approve ordinance number ten eighty-eight, ordinance ordering special elections on May third, twenty twenty-five to vote on proposed amendments to Levelland City Charter on a second reading.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Any opposed? With that, the motion carries.
And we would continue to encourage any citizens that have questions or thoughts about it, um, to reach out to City Hall so that those can be answered. If one person has a question, we can assume that many other people have that same question, and we will work to get that information out to them. Again, this is probably the most transparent uh, process I've seen on one of these, and we want to keep that up through the end. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to publicly recognize the work of the attorney, as well as the workers of the uh, committee.
Yes, thank you to those members.
Dedication there and.
Yes, and their time. I agree very, very much so. Next will be item number six, to consider and take necessary action on board appointments for the city of Leveling Boards and Commissions.
Mayor, at this time, I would move that we table this until our February eighteenth meeting.
Is there a second?
February eighteenth meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? With that, the motion carries, and we will table those board appointments until February eighteenth. Um, the next item on the agenda is number seven, to consider and take necessary action on the authorization and ratification on the purchase of computers, laptops, servers, and other IT-related equipment utilizing ARPA funds per resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty.
Mayor, members of the council, um, when we approved the resolution in December for the expenditures of ARPA funds, this is one of the items that we had listed in there. Part of the reason we didn't have this to you at the time, we were trying to uh, get quotes from Dell on uh, the rugged laptops for uh, the police department, and also replacing various other pieces of computer equipment. And as Chief O'Brien said, um, we are moving from iPads to the laptop computers within the units. She mentioned them as MDTs, which are mobile data terminals. And she is absolutely correct. They will be able to be out in the field, be able to do reports. And if I remember correctly, and we may have to tweak this, but as they get closer to the law enforcement center, uh, we have the ability to download uh, what is within their uh, laptop automatically as they get close to the facility. So that will also save time in, in that aspect as well. We ordered these items um, last week or maybe at the end of the previous week, mainly because of the, the time period, it was a thirty to forty-five day uh, expected delivery. They could be here within ten days, or they could be the whole forty-five. So we went ahead and moved forward on that. Uh, the cost for all those mobile, mobile data terminals is approximately seventy thousand dollars. Uh, in addition to that, there were additional desktops and laptops for dispatch police water and administration that we needed to replace as well, which came into about a hun, uh, sixty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, again, ratification of that item, we're asking for is for, to authorize and ratify the purchase of these laptops, computers, servers, and other IT-related equipment using the ARPA funds per resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty in the amount of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars.
I would like to add before y'all take action, this is really a formalization of the commitment that y'all made with those funds last calendar year.
Right.
And so there's, uh, this is not new, um, it just, um, you know, took this step, and now you're really just creating that paper trail that shows that it's actually happening now. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we discussed several times about the need to have those in those units, have our officers out and, and, and about.
And as the members of the fire department have told me that they got their items ordered first before PD, so.
Now, if it there can be.
Look at them back there. They're both just shrugging.
My only question was, what will we do with the existing iPads?
We um, will take those and clean them. We will probably uh, see if anyone needs them here in town. If not, uh, Blue Layer.
An idea. I don't have any plan for them. I was just curious.
Over the past month, we have been doing cleaning houses here at City Hall. Uh, the other day, we destroyed forty?
Forty-one bins, which are the big trash cans, forty-one.
Of documents that per state law, we shredded those documents. We also found a lot of monitors, a lot of different pieces of computer equipment. Blue Layer, who is our IT provider, uh, is going to come by and pick up all of that stuff and look at what can be used and what can be. They'll clean it, get everything off of it, and then they will um, find a nonprofit that they work with to, to make that available and, and utilize it there, and will probably try to follow the same routine as we replace. The PD stuff will have to be very careful with to make sure that it's probably cleaned two or three times, to make sure there's nothing in there. Um, so.
Mr. Fisher, you did call around town and ask the schools and all that. I was.
Yes, we.
Make sure that we asked you locally.
Thank you.
If anyone want to know what cleaning house looks like, it's about six feet tall filed up in the conference room.
Well, sounds like lots of research done to make sure nobody locally needed or, or could grab those and use them, and maybe if somebody does, they're listening right now.
There's not a lot of monetary value of used IT equipment, but if it's nonprofits or somebody that can use those, I, I think that's a great idea.
I, but I'm by no means with that pointed. I don't have any better ideas, but I will think about it now. It's a good point for a nonprofit. I haven't thought about it that way. That is a, uh, an action item to approve those IT-related.
Move that we authorize and ratify the purchases. Move that we authorize and ratify the purchase of laptops, servers, and other IT related equipment uh utilizing our ARPA funds for the resolution twenty twenty four dash forty in the amount of one thirty-eight, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, the motion carries. We'll move on to item number eight to consider and take necessary action to ward a bid for a tractor with mower deck for the wastewater department.
Sorry, uh brain was elsewhere. American Council, this item before you is for a tractor mower deck uh for the wastewater department. Um, I know we we looked around locally and then um one quote was received through John Deere and utilized the purchasing co-op of Sourcewell. The second quote we received is from Terry County Tractor for Kubota uh utilizing the purchasing co-op buy board. Uh, staff recommended going with a lower bid from Terry County Tractor for the Kubota tractor and deck in the amount of forty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and sixty cents. Because we've got a lot of Kubotas out there in our parts partner. We're familiar with him and so that's where we're asking uh for this item. And I know there's been a lot of concern recently that the cities, some of our purchases have gone through buy board. Uh, buy board is a state cooperative purchasing program and it's not just buy board. There's a Houston Galveston area of governments, which the city is a member of. There's TIPS, which is a Texas government, internal government purchasing system. There there are several different pieces and the beauty of the buying boards that it, the specs, the bids, all of that has already been done and it takes advantage of government entities all throughout the state, not just cities, but schools, um, everything. And uses that purchasing power to get the best possible price. When we are purchasing, we go local first. We try to look here to see if anyone provides it here. Uh, and if not, then we start looking at the cooperating system before we even go out for bids. Cause bids are expensive, because we got newspaper ads, we've got time, we've got all of that that goes in there. So we we do local and then we do look at buy boards and then we actually go out for bids. If we don't see anything in the buy boards, that'll be able to take care of us.
I would just tell y'all, if if y'all are not taking advantage of of the purchasing co-ops at every opportunity, um, I think that's that's an issue. I mean, it it they're out there and they're available. They're legal. Um, and we have more and more people out here who are participating, vendors that are participating. So I've actually seen a lot of local um people show up, but it's an absolute gentleman of the tool.
From an economic development standpoint, would it be possible for us to potentially put on some kind of a seminar to help our local vendors be familiar with these cooperatives and buy boards and maybe show them how to do it or give them a the tools to to become a member where they could then participate? Maybe for our purchasing, our purchases, or maybe to get some other communities business?
I can look at what that would take to do. I have no idea.
Yeah, but maybe if we could just give them the resources to do that and and make them aware of the opportunities that are out there, the different, just like Slater just mentioned, you know, the tips and the buy board and other things. And I just wonder if that might be a great EDC tool and put out there where others could become more familiar with it and maybe pick up some business.
Has Spag done any of these kinds of things that that you're aware of?
I'm not aware of, but I can reach out to them and if if not, then we can reach out to some other groups and invite others from not just uh Levland, Hockley County, but some around us as well. So.
Well, I definitely know that we have a lot of Kubota equipment and there is power in that, especially when when one breaks and we can steal apart from another or all the little accessories that they have. They're not little giant mowing accessories they have.
And with our guys being familiar with them, they're easier to repair.
You know how to work on them. You know how to change the oil and how to do the things. Power there.
I move to approve the bid for Kubota mower deck in the amount of forty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Any opposed? With that, the motion carries and we will move on to item number nine, which is an update on the weather incident on May twenty ninth, twenty twenty four.
Mayor, we are uh our hail damaged vehicles. We're progressing through that. We've completed all of the police department vehicles. We're now moving into public works and building inspections, getting those completed. We will um the vehicles that are total will be decommissioning those over the next couple of weeks. And then they'll probably need to go out for auction. We're still working with insurance on various uh items to to resolve. And we're still working with FEMA and filing everything we can. FEMA in some ways is like your insurance. You just keep filing with them and some things they may cover, some things they may not. Uh, some things they may point you and say, uh, go go this route and there's potential funding over there. So Cole has been doing a phenomenal job of managing that and uh looking at every um revenue source available to help us uh recover. We're still um the big question out there uh is probably the the scariest one is the fire department roof uh was damaged. Um, and there's some estimates that it's six hundred thousand dollars uh to replace it. Um, our insurance is kind of waffling on covering it. Uh, mainly because a couple of years ago it had some damage and they didn't cover it then and they made some kind of weird thing. So we're trying to work through that. Um, I hope to get it resolved sometime soon. It's just, it's very frustrating in in that aspect. But that is a huge expenditure that's sitting out there. And then today we got reminded when the town went dark in places that um our generators need to be replaced, especially at uh dispatch uh fire department and trading that one for ours here because we didn't have one here. So uh it was dark and we also found some of our emergency lights were not working. So it was kind of a good exercise prior to uh storm season. Um, so um, we just got to continue to stay vigilant in what we do and and take care of um the community as we move forward. Questions on the storm or anything?
Have we burned our debris yet?
We have not, and I've been trying to figure out where we're at on that because we need to get that done.
Like every time we have an opportunity, we get a windstorm. Or it's thirty.
Where it rains.
Outside where it rains.
And the last big rain flooded the pit and it moved all of the debris every which way. So we had to put it all back and.
Now Cole and the fire department will be glad when that's behind us, I'm sure. Very much. And the landowner.
God, that's.
Very much so. Any other questions on the May twenty ninth, twenty twenty four storm? Next will be item number ten, city manager report, staff updates, project updates, staff citizen recognition, items of community interest. No action will be taken.
Mayor, we are beginning uh putting together. But most of y'all received a mailer like this from Excel Energy and we will be sending out something this size regarding our water meter project. I got one copy, so I'll let you look at it and pass it down. That will be going out to the residents uh probably mid to late February and then we will send out another uh notice um mid to late March, tentatively scheduled um for this project to begin beginning of April and it will have very similar to a business, kind of like a soft opening. We'll just start with a few homes and just kind of see how everything works before we jump in at full scale. And it's approximately a six month project. Um. All of you tonight received a letter um from a company that is looking at building on some property in town and um they will be, if they get the information to the city, they will be uh having a resolution on the February eighteenth uh city council agenda for for tax credits and for the development. Um, I hope they get it that date because their application is due to the state by the end of February. Uh, we will not call a special meeting just for them. They don't get their ducks in a row. So um, if you got any questions, once you get the chance to review the letter, uh let me know and we'll we'll chase that down. Most important thing, um Friday, Level N listens is at seven thirty this Friday morning at the Civic Center at City Park. I need some volunteers or voluntolds. Uh, the mayor is out of town. I will be out of town. So Joe has graciously volunteered to be there.
I would say that that they've been interesting. They've been positive.
Yeah, the last one was fantastic. I won't be able to be there. I was about to volunteer you.
I may not be.
That would be nice. I'll be there.
Thank you. Perfect. Perfect.
I I don't know if that's safe or not, most.
I like it. I like it.
Yes, it is. Yeah, you two and Joe, this there may be smoke signals coming from Levland before the day's over.
At the Civic Center?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll be watching.
Might have extra help over there that day.
I could come late.
So. Uh, a couple of other things before we move into executive session, just uh Justin Naurov, our Economic Development Director. Uh, he received an award from the High Ground of Texas um as the the Top Gun Award um from their membership. So that's a good reflection in our community. And he's also been asked to serve on the Texas Economic Development Council uh on their board for things that happen. So again, that's a good representation in our community.
Fisher, I'm sorry. I didn't hear. Who was it?
Justin, our Economic Development Director. So um recognition of his work. And the last thing, and I'll give this to you and you can just read it later if you have questions. Uh, we've started getting monthly updates from Park Hill on various projects that they're working on here in the city. So this will um serve as a um reminder of various things that they've got going. And if if you, when you look at this, if you've got questions on anything, uh shoot me an email, shoot Joe an email and we'll we'll chase it down for you. Anything else, ma'am secretary?
Said that was weekly or monthly?
You have anything, sir?
Actually, we're onboarding.
That's.
So I would love to tell you that. Okay.
I'd like to point out that just something I've noticed over the last week, the city yard at Hickory by the park um is so clean and well kept. It's cleaner than I feel like it's been in a decade or half a decade and huge compliment to the guys that are keeping that so nice.
At the Bartlett?
Uh, yes, yes. The city yard behind it, it it looks so nice.
What date was in the sixth of September?
This Friday. It's Friday. Friday morning at seven thirty. Okay, so. Are we ready for executive sessions? Okay. So at this time, we will convene into executive session in accordance with the Texas Government Code five five one dot oh seven four to deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation duty discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee, city manager, the city council of the city of Levland will convene into executive session on the twentieth day of January twenty twenty five at six forty-one PM o'clock. The subject matter of executive session deliberation is as follows. Have you read that? I need to read that again. In accordance with Texas Government Code five five one dash oh seven two to deliberate the purchase exchange lease or value of real property in accordance with Texas Government Code five five one dot oh eight seven to deliver our economic development negotiation. Am I good?
Did you do the oh seven one?
Your question, no, but we'll just do it. In accordance with Texas Government Code five five one dot oh seven one to seek the advice about pending or contemplated litigation settlement offers or in in matter in which duty of the attorney under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct to the state or Texas conflicts, Texas Government Code, chapter five five one.
Hold on.
The City Council of the City of Leavenland has completed its executive session on the 20th day of January 2025 at eight fourteen PM o'clock with no action and with that we are adjourned.
Thank you.